Well, good evening and welcome to the Salem City Council meeting for November 8th. I'll call that meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Counselor Stapleton.
I'm here.
Counselor Anderson.
I am too.
Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Leon. Counselor Gonzalez.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett. And you're muted, Mayor.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And are there any additions or deletions, Chris?
Yes, I have approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second by Counselor Phillips.
Right, I'm 3.2A. We have a revision to the Multiple Unit Housing Tax and Centered Programming Standards and Guidelines. There was some clarifying language added to the standards.
Okay. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor will say aye when the roll call's done.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, now it's time for council and city manager comments. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much, Mayor and counselors. I normally try my best to try and memorize what I have to say, and of course, time didn't allow for me to do that today, so I will try not to read my comments. But I wanted to talk about two different things today, one of which is climate change, and the other, which goes hand in hand with this, is an update on the experiment we did over on Winter Street and Union Street, which just concluded the end of this last month. So I wanted to start by saying that climate change is real, it's human caused, it's not up for debate anymore. And we know that our emissions have been going through the roof. They were hovering around 275 parts per million in the 1880s, and now we are near 400 parts per million. And we know that those numbers trigger weather patterns that we are seeing lately with the ice storms and the droughts and all of that leading to wildfires. We know that we have been living through a mass extinction since the 1960s, losing almost 60% of our biodiversity. And we know as a council that we have all come together and recognized the severity of the issue and the importance of addressing it now locally with swift and courageous action. And I know that the great work that the staff has done on the Climate Action Plan along with the Climate Action Committee, I just want to thank them so much for all of their hard work. We know that Salem's carbon emissions are coming, we know where they're coming from and how we need to address each of those areas. This council, I believe, is united in a sense of urgency, and we need everyone from residents to local businesses, to city staff, to all be on board and dedicated to this mission if we're going to succeed. We know that this is a global problem, and that does not excuse each of us from the work that has to be done, and I wanted to share a personal story here. I recently did a footprint calculator for my personal home, and you all know that I'm pretty, what I would call crunchy granola, pretty green here. And I do tons of recycling and composting and eco-conscious decisions with my purchasing, but my numbers were devastating. Right now, my earth overshot day is May 6th. That means that I start borrowing from the future every year on May 6th. It's a lot. In fact, I use 2.9 earth's worth of resources every year. I emit 8.7 tons of carbon into the atmosphere every year, and I use 4.7 global hectares of land to sustain my lifestyle. Now, the average person in the US uses eight global hectares, and we are second highest in the world. To live sustainably, you would need to be at under two global hectares. And just to kind of give you guys an idea of what that looks like, the folks who are meeting that goal right now are places like Afghanistan, Nigeria, and Kenya. Now, I encourage everyone to go and do this because it was really eye-opening for me. You can do that at footprintcalculator.org. It would be really, really educational for me. So as many of you know, Salem's number one source of emissions is transportation, and earlier this year, I asked council to support me in an experiment here locally to close down streets, Winter Street from Market to Union, and Union Street from Winter all the way down to First Street. And that was on Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00, and we did that for about three months. So I was out on the street most Saturdays, all but 3:00 in fact, to witness and see what was going on. And boy, did I learn a lot. It was a fascinating study of human behavior. Personally, I learned about making motions, communications between myself and staff, and the impacted neighborhoods and sectors. I learned a ton about signage and education and support. And I learned that layout is critical to success. So let me explain. We blocked off the streets at intersections in such a way that cross streets were able to get through, and originally, this plan made sense to me. I wanted to have the least amount of impact or negative impact for everybody. But what happened is that cars were allowed to go around the blockades and continue to use the streets that we were trying to open to folks who were biking and walking. There was not a time that I was on the streets that a car was not with me. Now, I heard a story from a mom in the neighborhood, in Grant neighborhood, who was out on the streets the first Saturday, so excited to be out there with her six-year-old on a bike. And she was out there, and all of a sudden, a car was behind her, and she was trying to direct her kiddo to the curb, and there was a big truck parked in front of her. And at the same time that that car was behind her, somebody, that truck, their backup lights came on. So she now was surrounded by cars that were moving and had to protect her little six-year-old kid. So she directed that kiddo to the curb, and they waited. And the backup lights came off, and the man got out of his truck and came around and yelled at her for not doing what she was supposed to do, which was have the right of way. So it was a really devastating situation. She said, I couldn't even get a word in edgewise. He was mad. He got in his car, floored it, and drove away. And she said, I don't feel safe, so I'm not going back, right? The blockades aren't working. So now, I talked to folks on the streets pretty much every single week, and everyone there using the space the way that was intended loved having it there. But folks, I talked to folks who were coming from Kaiser and folks who were coming from just a few blocks away. There were those who thought it was a great idea in the beginning, but ended up not seeing the benefit in the end. And there were folks who started in favor who ended up having some concerns, or sorry, folks that were not in favor that then had concerns that weren't, that didn't come to fruition. There was a woman who was concerned about the blockage over on Union Street. She was a local business. And so she and I talked, and she tracked her sales, and actually, they increased every single Saturday that we had the roads closed. So it was a really great success story for her personally. Folks from the Saturday Market had really great feedback from me, especially about the signage. The big construction signs that said "Road Closed" in red and white and black were uninviting and discouraged folks from being there. They wanted to say that, you know, using planters or positive signage like "Open to Bikes and Ped" would have been much better, changed the feel and been more inviting. In the end, I learned that our car-centric society is far from self-aware, even though we have over 800 miles of roadway designed almost entirely for car use here in the city of Salem. Getting up around two miles for six hours a week was not something folks who were driving cared for much. The disregard for the program led to an area that wasn't safe or comfortable for folks in our targeted group. I still believe that a robust interconnected and equitable bike network is, that is separate from cars but equal in access, is a must if we are going to reduce our emissions and meet our climate action goals. I look forward to presenting some of my ideas to the council in the coming months, but that is all I have for now. Thanks for letting me go a little long today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to follow up on Counselor Stapleton's excellent remarks, and I want to specifically talk about the Climate Action Plan. I was at all meetings of the task force, and I attended numerous individual meetings with staff and the consultants. I have to say that I'm very satisfied with and proud of the city's staff for the work they did, specifically Patricia Farrell and Rob Rovinek. I'm also very satisfied with the consultant work that Veritas Group did. And I just want to remind you that what the consultant did in conjunction with a wide range of folks from the city of Salem, from 350.org people to business people, to neighborhood leaders, to academic editions, to the Chamber of Commerce. They gave us a wide panoply of ways that the city itself can achieve the goals that I believe the city unanimously came up with when they also unanimously established the Climate Action Force. The task force and the consultants in the reports aren't telling us what to do. They're giving us a wide panoply of choices to reach the council goals. As I've said, I think in the council meeting, but certainly at task force meeting, this is not an easy matter. We are in a crisis. It is going to take some hard choices that none of us may like as individuals, but we're still going to have to make it. It's also going to take some sacrifices from all parties involved. And I look forward to working with the council to come up with the choices that we choose from the choices that were offered us. And I would add to the public who's listening to this, the council will be discussing this at a session on December 6th. The Climate Action Plan with its various actions that could be taken to reach the goal is out there. I would encourage everybody in the public to read it and to send comments to the council, either, I don't, I presume we'll have public testimony on the 6th, but also any kind of written comments you want to send before. Again, I am pleased to be a part of this and look forward to continuing to do our city's response to a statewide, nationwide, wide and worldwide crisis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, one and all. And kudos to Counselor Stapleton and Anderson. Thank you so much for your remarks. One of the things I really appreciate about Counselor Stapleton's remark is that, see, we can be innovative. We can come up with pilot projects. We can dive in headfirst and not break stuff. So I just encourage all of us that anytime we're looking at ways to consider innovating our city, taking our city in a direction that supports climate action, that supports sustainability, that supports our local community. You know, let's lean into those opportunities and not be afraid to try something new. So thank you so much, Counselor Stapleton, for your update on that, and thank you also, Counselor Anderson, for your updates and your attendance of all of our Climate Action Task Force meetings. It's been an exciting task force to be on, and I very much appreciate the fact that we had stakeholders from various sectors of the community, communities of color, our business community, representative from the community representing our unsheltered, and many more. A couple other things I'd like to add. Veterans Day is fast approaching, and if you don't have plans for Veterans Day, there is a celebration at 2:00 PM at the Oregon State Capitol on November 10th that is being held by the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. If you're like me, you have members of your family who have served in the military. My aunt and my uncle each gave 20 years or more of their lives to the US Navy and saw the world. My grandfather served in World War II and took advantage of the GI Bill, which changed my family's destiny forever. Because of him, he went to law school, first in our family to go to any form of college, let alone grad school. All his children went to grad school, and all of their children went to college, and some of us went to grad school as well. But I can draw a line back to his service and the GI Bill because it was truly transformative. So going back to the ODVA celebration, if you don't feel comfortable attending the celebration in person, The Statesman Journal reported that ODVA will be live streaming their event on their Facebook page. And speaking of veterans, I recently toured Project Able, which, among other things, provides veterans' mental health services. They provide all kinds of peer support, which is sorely needed if you feel like you need to talk to someone who's walked in your shoes, who's been through something similar to you. They have not only peers available to talk to you, but they also have peer support specialist training so that you can become a peer support specialist yourself. They even have scholarships available if you cannot afford to participate in the peer specialist training. Project Able also serves a variety of other individuals who are not military veterans. Their services are available for free here in town, ages 18 and up. So please check them out on their Facebook page for more information or their website. Lastly, while I'm talking about wellness, I'm really excited about the fact that in one of the many other hats that I wear, I serve on the Oregon State Bar House of Delegates, which is our own little mini legislature for all the legal nerds in the state. And I recently led the charge to approve a second wellness summit for Oregon lawyers and judges statewide. I ran our first ever wellness summit with the assistance of bar staff and a small army of volunteers back in 2019, early 2019. And I think it's safe to say that a lot has changed since 2019. So even if you're not a lawyer or a judge, wellness is certainly something that impacts all of us. And if you're curious about what it's like to put together a summit to talk about taboo topics like, oh, I don't know, depression, suicide, substance abuse, and so on, I would be happy to let you know how we put it together, how we were able to bring together stakeholders, how to use an equity lens. Please let me know. If you have any curiosity at all and what it's like to put this together for your industry, I'd be happy to talk to you about that. So thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to the rest of our meeting today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Counselor Gonzalez, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jose. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My name is Jose Gonzalez. You know, I usually introduce myself in multiple languages to highlight our city's longtime diversity. But today, in honor of Veterans Day, I'm going to only use English, but also acknowledging the diversity of the people who serve and make up our own forces. A couple comments, questions, and I'm glad to see that Gretchen is on our agenda with regards to our shelter population, but a couple things. One is there's a lot of concern around the Crox Center. It's in northeast Salem, serves a lot of families, low-income families, and there's, the encampments are going really quickly. And the staff and a lot of the neighbors have reached out to me to see what the city is doing about it, and also with the garbage that's piling up. Also, with regards to the West Salem Encampment, I sort of want to make sure that we don't go through, put our city through the same process that we did through getting that pre-approved, through the city assessing it. So I just want to make sure that maybe we want to hear what we've learned. That way, it's, the outreach is done appropriately, and we don't increase the stress of our residents. And the last thing I wanted to mention is just with regards to our housing shortage. You know, we hear a lot about the home selling fast, and that seems to be a gauge on how much housing we need, but not our office will also do rentals. And I got to tell you, it's just, this whole week, we have some properties up for rent, and it's just really scary what I'm seeing. We'll put a property up for rent, and we have to take the ad down in the next, in about two or three days. 30 to 50 people per unit. We see a difference when the house, you know, family. But what's really scary is the bed, whoever's on bed, that's, they have a lot of people in the hall or will see it, in the outhouses in their cars. And so it's just, the housing shortage that we're, of course, connected to what we're seeing of people living on the streets, but it's just, it's a lot worse than you think. They just try to advertise a small house for rent, and you'll see, saying, I just wanted to share that because it's something I've been doing this whole last week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jose. I do want to alert you, you sort of broke up during that, but I think we all caught the gist of what you were telling us, so thank you. Mr. Powers?
Mr. Mayor, is it okay? Do you want me to talk after Manager Powers?
I didn't see that you wanted to talk.
Sorry, thanks.
But I knew you would, so why don't we go on?
So I'll be brief, or do my best to try to be brief. Yes, my name's Trevor Phillips, Council for Ward 3. My day job is that I'm an emergency room doctor, and I've been imploring people to avail themselves of these safe, free, effective, convenient vaccines for months on end now. And I just wanted to say that this weekend was a real milestone personally. Everyone in our household is now had at least their first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. So last week was a big deal because the Pfizer vaccine has been approved for kids age 5 through 11. So as a parent of two kids in that age group, last weekend or this weekend couldn't have come soon enough. I've had some people reach out through social media asking like if the kids had any symptoms, and I can attest that, you know, neither one of the kids seemed to even notice the vaccine going in. They were a bit nervous, but they were like, oh, it's done, it's over now. And the only symptom that they've had is, and the parents have had this as well, is profound relief that we've gotten the protection provided by these safe, free, and effective vaccines. So, you know, it's available, you know, start looking at making scheduling appointments now at your local pediatric office, doctor's office, or pharmacy. As the shipments come in, it should be relatively easy to get signed up and get your kids protected. So I just wanted to share that, and it's not just about what we say sometimes as leaders, but what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
This is council. First, I'd like to draw your attention to our, our community report. It was released late last week. It summarizes the work of the city and its partners on the priorities that were set by, by council. And you will be beginning the process for setting the 2022 priorities next week at your work session. Staff are monitoring the national information sources regarding the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress. There will be guidelines, more information coming out over the next several weeks. As the legislation was just passed Saturday night, it's kind of early as far as specific uses of those funds. We do anticipate that our City Capital Improvement Plan will be a rich source of projects when we know more about the specific programs and criteria from the federal level. In response to the question and concern regarding some of our unsheltered residents, Gretchen Bennett is on the call, isn't on the meeting, and there is an information report on your agenda. And I would suggest that when we reach that point on the agenda, that, that council can have an opportunity to ask staff questions regarding our current work to, to shelter the unsheltered in our, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think I don't see any more hands. I think we're able to move on then. I've got a proclamation. Whereas each year on November 11th, we pause to remember the men and women who throughout history served bravely and selflessly in America's armed forces, preserving our strength and security as a nation. And whereas on Veterans Day, we commemorate the honorable legacy and sacrifices of our veterans, both those lost and those who thankfully are with us today. And whereas America has been blessed with an abundance of such men and women throughout its history who courageously battled in World Wars I, II, Korea, Vietnam, and the Middle East. And whereas on this Veterans Day, we salute their bravery and dedication to the defense of our democracy and the sovereignty of freedom-loving nations around the world. And whereas the nation and the free world are eternally grateful for the contributions of American veterans, men and women, and to the advancement of the cause of world peace. Now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby call upon all residents to observe November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day, and ask that the holiday be commemorated with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served and are serving to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy dated this 8th day of November. I want to be sure to second Counselor Nordike's mention of the veterans event at the Capitol on the, is it the 10th Vanessa you said? Yeah, it's, it's going to be an opportunity also to get a look, a discussion of the new Vietnam Memorial that's being proposed in, in the park, and I think at the Capitol, and I think if you're interested, it'll be a, a really interesting opportunity. Okay. As you know, every year, we recognize great volunteers in our community by hosting a volunteer recognition event. Unfortunately, we've been unable to do that the past couple of years, so we're doing the next best thing and bringing the awards to the recipients. When I was out of town last month, Councilors Hoy, Anderson, Phillips, and Gonzalez presented awards to several of this year's recipients, including, and at your service, to Terry Lupoli, outstanding neighbor to Muriel Meyer, distinguished project to Eduardo Agalo and the Holman Neighborhood Council and Community Partners, and a special mayor's award to Tibby Larson, who recently retired as the Public Works Department Volunteer Coordinator. A thank you to all of our volunteers who make our community a better place. We've got a short video presentation of the award presentations that we'd like to share now. We'll be highlighting volunteer recognition award recipients during the next several city council meetings, and hopefully, we can get back together in person in 2022.
I'm Tom Anderson. I'm the City Council for Ward 2, and on behalf of the entire city, I am pleased to present to Terry Lupoli, the City of Salem, at your service award. Terry, you've been a dedicated volunteer in NESCA for many, many years. Currently serve as the secretary. You also write the newsletter. You have been a vice president, and you care about your city, and you do things to help make it a better place.
I became involved with NESCA about 10 years ago because of the state hospital building that we knew was going to be sold and moved. And we knew it was going to affect our neighborhood, and therefore, I felt it was important to know what was going on and if there was anything we could do to help. So with the cooperation of Tom and a lot of our neighbors, we worked real diligently with the state and with the city on what we thought was a good vision for that property. And then last year, I started writing the newsletter. I tried to provide information that's meaningful as well as some that's kind of fun with graphics to where people can smile a little bit. I don't think there's enough smiling that goes on in the world today.
I'm here today with a longtime resident of the Morningside Neighborhood Association, Muriel Meyer. I am so honored to be here today to recognize the volunteer work that Muriel has done over the past many years. My family benefits from the work that she's done in the past when she used to live in the Cambridge neighborhood. She's applied for so many grants specifically for parks. We're sitting right now at a court surface that she helped improve with her dedicated volunteer work.
So I started with the Hillficker Park because that was right in my backyard, and it was just an empty park. And we got a grant for the trails, which Trevor has talked about. And from there, I just kept applying for different parks and different grants. We're sitting on a bench, then I got a grant for, and also the multi-use field here. I just love volunteering. I like to see what happens with the grants. I just love volunteering. I like to see what happens with the grants. And my future hopefully will be the Fairview Park, 28 acres, uh, Phase One.
Hello, my name is Jose Gonzalez. Buenas tardes. I'm City Councilor for Ward Five. I'm here at North Gate Park. Right, and it's my honor and on behalf of what the city's efforts to recognize individuals and groups doing great work in our community, I'm here to present Eduardo Angulo and the Holman Neighborhood Council and Community Partners with this volunteer recognition award. Eduardo led an effort to host Eight Friday events in July and August in North Gate Park where we're standing. Each event was a coming together of community organizations to share resources with the neighbors. Hundreds of volunteers attended.
Uh, I lived here for around 18 years, and, uh, I used to do Eight Fridays at the park, hot dogs and lemonade. Uh, we were just, uh, uh, feeling that, uh, the families didn't have, uh, a place to go in the summertime. Now with the, with the COVID, you know, situation, uh, we believe that the park wasn't safe enough. There was a lot of, uh, people having parties here overnight, a lot of alcohol and drugs. And we decided that, uh, that we could, uh, change that kind of dynamics. We decided to get together with the members of the Holman, um, Neighborhood Family Council, all neighbors. And we said, let's put together the Fun Fridays at North Gate Park. And we invited a lot of community, uh, partners, a lot of, uh, agencies to come in and, and bring their, uh, resources. Um, in the Eight Fridays, we have an average of 330 to 450 people every Friday. I think this belongs to the entire community. Uh, people are coming forward and saying, I want to be part of the solution.
I'm really pleased, uh, to be, uh, taking some time to honor Tibby Larson with a special award presentation for 20, her 20 years of service as Salem's Park Volunteer Coordinator, and the many thousands of people who volunteered under her watch to enhance Salem's parks and activities programs. As Parks Volunteer Coordinator, Tibby managed projects and activities in the city's 92 park system. She worked with individuals and large groups of all ages on countless types of projects, anywhere from painting city fire hydrants to trail renovation and tree planting. Tibby always carefully matched the skill level of volunteers to ongoing project needs. And as you know, coordination between volunteers, park staff, and the big picture is really what's crucial to the outcome of any work that's done in this area. Tibby managed her incredibly complex role, uh, with really professionalism, grace, and integrity.
Throughout the years, I've had the good fortune of meeting thousands of volunteers and residents throughout our city. It has been a really rewarding and positive journey.
Very good. It's really, uh, we have just a tremendous group. I've had a chance over the past few days to be handing out a number of these awards, and it's remarkable. You have a, a lot to listen to coming forward on these. The tremendous amount and the breadth and depth of, of activities, uh, by our volunteers are, are really laudable. So, thank you again. Uh, it's time for public comment, so I want to call up, uh, Marion County Clerk, uh, Bill Burgess. And remind everybody that does this that you've got about three minutes to, uh, to speak, and then, uh, clock runs out. So Bill, yeah, you're, you're there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, can you see me? I, I can't, uh, that's all right.
That is okay. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there we go.
There you are.
Due to modern technology, I'm able to speak to you. I'm actually, we're camping in, in, uh, the Deshues National Forest at, uh, the Fall River, uh, area. And I'm here with a couple of other, uh, former city, uh, uh, neighborhood counselors, Tom Griffin Vilade and Alan Kirk. Alan was the first person to write current events for the city. Um, and so the, the, there are folks here that really care about making government work for people. Um, certainly, um, and I'm certainly glad, Mayor, that you invited me to talk about, uh, the, uh, reaparagement and, uh, the redistricting because, uh, or due to the, the latest census so that we can rebalance every ward. That's really, um, important. But we're, uh, playing with some really fine timelines, and I'm glad you've got something scheduled here that's gonna go, looks like it's going to go well to meet it so that we can actually, um, have candidates fielded ahead of time. Uh, and, uh, you've, you've got Leslie Hegewold, I believe, is going to speak tonight on this issue too. But I'm just asking you to be sure to, to stay on time with that so that we can, um, actually, um, advertise for the positions that are going to be open. We can't set the boundaries or the precinct boundaries until the city sets its ward boundaries. And we also have precinct committee people that will be running for election. So that's all important. We try really hard to make sure that each ward has distinct precincts that don't cross across wards. And so that just makes it so much easier for accountability at each election. And so, uh, you know, because of the fact, usually we have this done by now. It looks like we're going to be working in this through the holidays. We would like to have it done before the end of the year if possible so that, uh, candidates have time to file and know, uh, you know, what ward they would be filing from and, and what ward or what precinct they're filing from. We're also waiting for, um, things from the legislature. It depends on what happens with, whether there are appeals. The Supreme Court may have everything ready for us in December, but again, that may go into January too. A filing deadline for most candidates is, uh, March the 8th. I think the city gives it, uh, people another week after that. But we're glad to get all those lines set, and I'm just, uh, uh, thankful for you guys going and getting the job done. And if you've got any elections questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much, Bill. Thanks for taking time out, out there in the, in the wilderness, it looks like.
Yeah.
What a good start. Night. What, uh, anyone got any questions? Okay, well, good. We'll let you go back to your tent.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, um, Michael Slater, three minutes.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor Bennett and, uh, councilors. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Planning Commission to call your attention to the item, Agenda Item 6B. Item 6B is a letter unanimously adopted by the Planning Commission to you, the City Council, recommending that you consider initiating funding and update to the city's waterway map and also an update to our development code to comply with the state, state's mandated language protecting riparian corridors from development. Waterways and riparian corridors are protected resources under Goal Five of Oregon's land use policies. As our letter notes, we recently heard a disputed land use application during which we learned about our shortcomings in this area. Unfortunately, because our map and code had not been updated, the commission was forced to make a decision that, from the perspective of the Glenn Gibson Watership Council, the West Salem Neighborhood Association, and a number of commissioners, we feel were not in the public interest. We hope that you'll take necessary action to solve this problem so we can better protect Salem's creeks and riparian areas, which have an important role to play in supporting native wildlife and in mitigating and adapting to climate change, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Great, thanks, Michael. Uh, Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. I don't really have a question, Mr. Slater. I just want to say thank you very much for you and the rest of the Plan Commissioners to bring this to our attention. It is an, a, an item later on in our agenda, and at that point, I'm sure I and the other councilors will be asking staff to start moving that process forward. So again, thanks to you and the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I'll pass that back.
Great, thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Uh, Councilor Nordike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I echo Councilor Anderson's comments. Um, I find it concerning to hear that our standards may be out of date, and we so appreciate all of the work that you and the commissioners do to do the deep dive into these projects. So I appreciate you bringing this specific example available. And, uh, please do, you know, keep up the great work. And if you see other areas that you think need to be brought to our attention, I have no doubt that you and the planning commissioners led by Chin Griggs and others will bring it to our attention. We sincerely appreciate your partnership and your professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Michael, and, uh, Josh Pollak. Three minutes, Josh?
Okay, uh, there, there I am. Okay. Um, hello, I'm Josh Pollak. I'm here today as a citizen. I live in Ward Eight, West Salem. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here today to support the letter submitted by Salem Planning Commission regarding commitment to funding an update of the city waterway map. The City of Salem is on the threshold of approving an updated comprehensive plan. Under this plan, City Salem is reported to have approximately 90 miles of creeks and streams which run through Salem and eventually drain to the Willamette River. These waterways and the more than 1,000 acres of natural area in Salem are reported to provide a variety of environmental, recreational, ecological, and other benefits to the community. Consequently, the City of Salem goals include balancing growth and development with the protection and conservation of natural resources, including wetlands, waterways, floodplains, riparian corridors, and urban tree canopies. The Planning Commission has many tools in its toolbox which to balance the equity of development and protect, and co, protection and conservation of its natural resources. However, when those tools do not actually reflect the reality, as commissioners, they are limited to, to adopting, to the adopted criteria. The legal framework that guides quasi-judicial hearings require that when producing findings, a hearing body is to ensure it applies a criteria prescribed by statute, administrative rule, and its own regulations, and do not act arbitrarily or on an ad-havoc basis. Any, absent any unclear or ambiguous interpretation of the criteria, if the applicant demonstrates compliance, the application must be approved even if the decision-maker disagrees with the criteria or believes that additional or unadopted criteria should apply. Our ability to balance equity between development and protection of, and conservation of natural resources is therefore limited to the adopted criteria. In the case of the protection of our extensive waterways, I respectfully urge the council to fund the up, updating of our waterway map so that we can more closely align the intent of the statewide Goal Five and the proposed comprehensive plan. Uh, I, I, oh, that's it. I just want to say real quick, um, for Veterans Day, we approved a housing, a portable housing project across from West Salem, and we're really proud of that, and that's going to go for Oregon veterans.
Great.
Oh, 16 seconds. Wow.
Perfect, perfect, Josh. Does anyone have any questions for Josh? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for taking us earlier in the agenda.
Certainly. And then I'm also going to call up, uh, Naili Cruz.
Hi.
Hi. We can hear you. Go ahead and just introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Naili Cruz, and I have two points today. Um, I want, uh, to urge you to vote to fund the, the body cams. And I would also like to address the lack of a motion to waive the facility fees for the Jerry Frank Amphitheater for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, Salem's Indigenous Now has been charged $693.50 for the use of this space on Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 11th. I believe this Native American Heritage Month, Indigenous Now, should have this fee waived. It is my understanding that a counselor should make this motion or raise it for discussion, and I look forward to hearing about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Naili. We appreciate you coming by.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move then to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of Item 3.3C pulled by Mayor Bennett.
Okay.
Second.
There we go.
Thank you. All right, that leaves us with, uh, Item 3.1A, the October 25th, 2021 Draft City Council Work Session Minutes. 3.1B, October 25th, 2021 Draft City Council Minutes. Item 3.2A, uh, which is a, which is a revision to the Multiple Unit Housing Tax Incentive Program Standards Guidelines. Item 3.3A, Increase in Scope and Funding for the U.S. Geological Survey to Maintain a Wider Quality Monitoring Program in the Standing River Basin. Item 3.3B, Intergovernmental Agreement with the Burgess, Intergovernmental Agreement and Purchase and Sale Agreement with the City of Turner for the Turner Water Pump Station. Item 3.3D, Police Management Compensation Benefits. Item 3.3E, Reappointment of Linda Olson as Municipal Court Municipal Judge for Ten. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Right, very good. Any discussion? Okay, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung? Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move forward then to our public hearings today. We'll go to, uh, 4A. Would you like to kick us off? Amy, is that?
I sure will, Mayor. The City Council will now conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding amendments to the 2019 and 2020 Annual Action Plans for Community Development Block Grant Funds. The hearing will begin with a staff presentation, and, uh, there are no individuals that signed up.
Okay, well, I'll call that. I'll, uh, uh, open that public hearing. So who is, Tiffany, are you doing?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
I am sharing my screen for the slide presentation. Are you able to see?
No, not yet. There it comes.
There. Good evening and, uh, hello again. I am presenting Amendment Number Six to the 2019 Annual Action Plan as well as Amendment Number Four to the 2020 Annual Action Plan. This provides a purpose for public opportunity to hear and comment on proposed amendments. Part of the consolidated plan requires that each year an annual action plan is created to identify what activities will take place within that program year. A required public notice announcing the 2019 Number Six and the 2020 Amendment Number Four were presented in the Statesman Journal on October 20th and 2021. There were no public comments received to this date. In review, back in July, I had presented about the CDBG dollars and the CARES Act. So there have been some changes making you aware. For Amendment Number Six of 2019, reducing the original allocation of the $200,000 to $40,000 for the support of the childcare providers in the community. This is for education classes, for ongoing education or new education for new providers. Allocating the $160,000 difference from that CDBG CV3 plus $37,474 from previously unallocated. plus thirty-seven four seventy-four from previously unallocated twenty nineteen CDBG entitlement funds to the Salvation Army for rental assistance and case management. This is just a change of what was a full allotted of the twenty nineteen unallocated that we're now using the full CDBG CV three difference. Allocating forty, fifty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-six from unallocated twenty nineteen to buy Bridgeway Recovery Services an emergency generator and satellite phones. They had lost their emergency power to their station on Herald Drive during the ice storm. Allocate an additional two hundred thousand dollars from unallocated twenty nineteen funds to seat of faith for a sprinkler system, fire exit doors, windows for egress, ADA lavatories, and other items to cover current health and safety codes for the building. Allocate an additional two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, excuse me, from unallocated twenty nineteen funds to the Salem Housing Authority for Yaquena Hall. And then amendment number four of the twenty twenty is to allocate an additional ninety-three thousand three hundred and six dollars from unallocated twenty twenty funds to the Salem Housing Authority for Yaquena Hall. The total allocation for the two years to Yaquena Hall will be a total of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't have anyone signed up, uh, for public comment. Uh, counselors, do you have any questions for Tiffany? Okay. Counselor Hoy, do you have a motion here?
Mr. Mayor, I move city council adopt amendment number six to the two thousand nineteen.
I'll, let me close the hearing. I apologize. I'll close that hearing and then go ahead and make your motion. I'm sorry.
All right.
Hearing closed.
Noted.
Now you.
I move.
Sorry.
It's all right. I move we adopt amendment number six to the two thousand nineteen annual action plan. Amendment and amendment number four to the two thousand twenty annual action plan amendment and direct staff to submit required forms to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Again.
Second by Stapleton. Okay, any discussion on this? Yay, Yaquena Hall getting.
Yay, Yaquena Hall.
Getting closer. We're getting closer.
We are gonna get that thing open. That's just.
At some point, it will be open.
That is the goal. Thank you.
Fantastic, fantastic. It's good seeing it move forward. Okay, if we're ready, we'll go ahead and vote. If the recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Now I'll open this second public hearing on supplemental budget, uh, and I'll have the recorder tell you what it's all about.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing regarding the adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-two supplemental budget to increasing trust and agency expenditure appropriation authority in the amount of twelve million three hundred thousand to appropriate unanticipated funds made available by the state of Oregon. The hearing will begin with the staff presentation and no individuals signed up to testify. Thank you.
Josh?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City counselors. I'm Josh Agelson, the city's acting CFO. I do not have a formal presentation for you this evening, but I wanted to briefly summarize the action requested. This public hearing for the supplemental budget to appropriate three of the four state grants that are also on your agenda for approval this evening. These are not included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and need to be added to access the funds. Budget authority for the fourth grant for the police body cameras program was included in the budget, which is why it isn't included in the action this evening. A public hearing is required to do the size of this supplemental budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions? We're going to talk about this under three C, or we can talk about it now, and I'll just move that three C right along. Uh, Tom, do you want to go ahead?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh, we talked this afternoon. Um, and I was specifically concerned with the item, uh, of the, uh, ten and a half million dollars we got from the state, which is a great thing for a shelter housing. And as you pointed out to me, we have already purchased the low barrier navigation center before we even got these funds. So I would be interested if you could tell us for what these funds will be used, uh, or what you will be recommending to us their use for, and that includes uh, capital expenditures versus operating costs. I'm all in favor of this. I just think we ought to be, uh, we ought to celebrate that amount of money, and you can tell us how we can help the unsheltered people in our city.
Great, and I can let Steve and Gretchen weigh in if needed also. Um, but initially, we're proposing the use for some, uh, cleanup, uh, funds. Um, these, uh, these funds are state general fund dollars fairly broad in their use, uh, as mentioned in the grant agreement. Um, we'll bring back, uh, as we consider larger uses of the funds, we'll bring them back to council for consideration.
Okay. Counselor Nordike?
Uh, thank you. I'm just a little unclear. So out of this ten million dollars, is five million of it already committed to the navigation center?
No, this is a separate ten point five million. The five hundred million dollar grant for the navigation center has already been received by the city and is waiting until that navigation center is open.
Great. It's because when I heard that, I wasn't sure. Um, well, wow. Well, obviously, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues, I look forward to discussing what to do with this opportunity and how to leverage these dollars and get the most bang for bucks. So that's exciting news. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Virginia, are you just waiting for?
I was pointing to Chris. Chris has got.
Chris has got a point.
Oh, Chris is, doesn't work that way. Chris has to wave really actively for me to see.
I have been.
Oh, okay. But so dark.
I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The, the navigation center grant was five million, not five hundred million. Um, that's just, I think, an important decimal point, Josh, um, that we get right, so the public doesn't think that we got a five hundred million dollar grant. Um, but this is regardless of the number. It's remarkable and historic in terms of the amount of money and the amount of support we got from the state legislature for city of Salem operations and, uh, very, very happy. I think our legislative committee has done a great job. Our lobbyists has done a great job, and thanks to our entire Salem delegation to help us, uh, get these all across the finish line and, and get them into our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I'll have the, um, what I got? Oh, I need a, uh, motion, Chris.
I'd like you to close the public hearing first, please.
Yeah, I'll close the public hearing. Go ahead.
I move city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash forty-five fiscal year twenty twenty-two supplemental budget to increasing trust and agency expenditure appropriation authority in the amount of twelve million three hundred thousand to appropriate unanticipated funds made available by the state of Oregon.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any further discussion? Okay, if the recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on then. Uh, I'm gonna, if you guys don't mind, I'm gonna just pull up three point three C. It's just an extension of this real quickly. Um, and, uh, I'm going to move the, um, staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Uh, I just wanted to highlight this again, a couple of things here, uh, I think are really important. Uh, the Salem Police Body Camera Program is included here. Uh, there's been some, I think some concern raised in the community about what's going on with that program. It's moving forward uh, without a, without a hitch as far as I can tell. Um, and there's just been a substantial, as been pointed out, uh, allocation really for a number of years, uh, from, uh, sessions, both interim as well as regular sessions uh, to the city of Salem. I want to kind of alert you, those of you who will be here for the next regular session and on. This is not regular business with the state legislature. We've gone for decades with no support. Uh, we turned that around, and I'm gonna give a lot of credit, uh, to, uh, the city staff and leadership, um, the manager, being willing to hire a real live professional lobbyist, uh, that is not our staff person, but is a person who works in our behalf down there, and Justin Martin has done a tremendous job. The legislative committee has understood their job. Uh, we have worked, those of us who, uh, do work over there have worked as a team uh, generally, and I think that's really important. We try very hard to speak with one voice. I hope you can continue that into the future, and we have been blessed, absolutely blessed as a community to have Peter Courtney uh, in the legislature as president of the Senate. Uh, we certainly want to thank, uh, other members of our delegation, but uh, Courtney absolutely has just carried our, our bucket to the, to the well year after year, and it was after uh, a great deal of work, uh, together with him that we have developed that relationship. Uh, and I, I, I hope you will continue to, uh, have those kinds of relationships over at the legislature as you move forward. Uh, one of the common, if you all have heard, if you haven't heard it, you will at some point in your career on the council. One of the very common concerns people express is to us is, well, we've got all this state land and they don't pay any taxes. Well, that's true, but we have been, uh, we've worked hard to make sure they pay part of the bills. And they have, uh, developed a way to do it. So, uh, I hope you can keep, uh, this kind of relationship going. Uh, it really, I think, is great for the city. It allows us to target funds onto very specific areas, uh, particularly ones like homelessness that are of such tremendous concern to our communities. So I just wanted to highlight this. I, I'm really, really pleased, and we could go back and do this uh, for the past, uh, six years and see what's gone on here. This, this really has worked well. So I hope we can keep up the good work. Okay, is there any further discussion, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very glad you pulled this, and I had asked to pull it too, uh, because we really need to get this information out to the public. Here are the funds we're getting. Here are the funds we're spending. Here's what they're going for. Uh, and they're achieving many of our council goals that we have set, and they also are achieving much of the uh, suggestions we have heard from the public. For example, the body cameras are something that, that the public has been very concerned with, and here, and we've gone out and done it, and I agree with you that everybody involved, uh, deserves congratulations, and it's good that the public knows what we are trying to do for the public benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, then we will have the recorder call the roll on this. I'll close the, I'll close the hearing first, though.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
It's not a hearing.
No.
Sorry.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy? Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to five point A. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council conduct a public hearing on the three alternative ward boundaries.
Second. Just one.
Thank you.
Could I ask one, just quick question real quickly? Is this just, this says we're gonna hold a public hearing? We haven't set a date. Is that the idea here?
I believe it'll be at our next meeting.
Okay.
Um, if I could just.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. If I could just speak to my motion briefly, I know we have staff here to, to present, but I would, as, you know, we heard from the county clerk about timeliness, and I would, I guess I would just like to throw my, uh, two cents on to what he said. In addition, I think that, um, the process that we have undertaken here in the city is, is our tradition, has been an excellent one, and I, we have an opportunity to adopt, uh, one of three options, and these are analytical, uh, data-driven options, not political options. And I hope that council maintains that by choosing from amongst the three, whichever one is your favorite. But, uh, if we start piecemealing the, if we start trying to massage these maps ourselves, massage the options, it's gonna go from, uh, uh, a very analytical, staff-driven process to a very political process likely to, to draw it out in time, and I would hate to see that happen. So I'm hoping that we choose from the three.
No, no amendments is kind of what you're recommending then, is that?
That's, yeah, unless staff decides that there's some sort of reason to do, uh, as, you know, they had some new information, they, they bring forth an amendment. I would not, I would prefer to not see counselors, um, uh, bring amendments, although certainly if they're everybody's prerogative, I'm just putting my argument out there on why it might not be a great idea.
Okay. Does anyone want to argue? They want to politicize these things? I just want to hear. I think it'd be an interesting one. Great, thank you, Hoy. You set a good, good tone for this. Does anyone have any, uh, any discussion on this? I, I, I had a chance to go over it in some detail. I had them blow up some big maps so I could actually see where these things are. If you were looking at them online, I thought they were really quite difficult to look at, uh, but, uh, so if you ever want to look at these in large format, they're here in my office. You're more than welcome to take a look. Um, I thought they did a real good job and really offered some, some really interesting choices. Uh, they're, they're not huge, but they're interesting. They, they take another look at the way some of the wards are configured. Um, I know certainly Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Seven, uh, to me had some, those are the ones I'm most familiar with because I represented Ward One. Uh, had some very interesting changes, uh, not big ones, but interesting changes proposed in them. So I, I'm really looking forward to hearing the discussion on this myself. This is a very interesting part of the process every ten years. Yes, Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Um, Lisa, maybe you could, um, I guess, help the public understand what those data-driven points are. You know, Chris talked about those, but each one of these, the data is driving them to, to look different for different reasons. So could you maybe highlight the different reasons for the three different maps so that uh, folks just really get a clear understanding of what we're talking about here?
Lisa, do you want to take that?
Sure. Yeah, hi, Lisa Anderson. I'll be your planning administrator. Um, I actually have Leslie Hegewald here with me from the Council of Governments, and she has a brief presentation if that.
Oh, okay.
pleases the council, and she can go over the criteria and, and highlight the three alternatives and how the public can view them online, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Leslie, then I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Um, great. Thank you for having me this evening to talk about the redistricting efforts. Um, as Bill Burgess mentioned earlier, we have such a short amount of time this time. It's really been a compressed schedule. Um, but I've been really happy with the way things have gone so far. It's been pretty smooth, and, um, I think that we're on target to have this finished up by the end of the year so that Bill can sleep at night again. So, um, so I just have a brief PowerPoint presentation and a brief, um, web map demo, and then I can take questions if anyone has any. So bear with me while I share my screen. And start my PowerPoint. Let's take a second. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay? Okay. Um, so as Lisa said, my name is Leslie Hegewald. I'm the GIS coordinator for the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. Um, and we've been contracted to provide the redistricting services. Um, this is actually the third time I've done this for Salem as well as, uh, several other cities and districts in the three county region. And, um, again, this is a much shorter timeline than. And um, again, this is a much shorter timeline than we've had in the past. Uh, the last two times we've had about six months to complete this work and we have just under three months this time. Um, so I'm really happy to be to this point, um, this early, so. Um, so as I think everyone's probably aware by now, redistricting occurs every 10 years following each decennial census. Um, for the purpose of rebalancing the population among the wards uh to ensure uh equal representation. Um, due to um uneven population growth uh in the last decade. Here. So the redistricting process is driven by two main things, the first being the data. Uh, the data comes from the US Census Bureau in the Public Law ninety-four dash one seventy-one redistricting file. This is the same data file that's used by the states for legislative senate and congressional redistricting. Um, it's very limited data set from the Census Bureau based on the twenty twenty census. It includes just total population, population by race and ethnicity and population by race and ethnicity for people age eighteen and over. And it's tabulated by the census block geography, which is the smallest unit of geography that data is tabulated for. You may be familiar with other census geographies such as census tracts. Um, this little graphic just shows the census block and how it nests into block groups, which nest into uh tracts, which actually nest into counties then. Uh, the second thing that drives the process is the criteria and that comes to us in a directive issued by the Secretary of State. Uh, that was issued on September ninth of this year. And this is uh actually the criteria that uh is the exact wording that's in that directive. Um, and it, these are the rules that we have to follow when we're redefining the boundaries. And they include things like they need to be of equal population, uh relatively, being contiguous, um, following natural boundaries. Um, connected by transportation links and so on. Um, the census flat block geography does create some challenges. Um, so sometimes it's difficult to get the population exactly even between all of the wards. So for that purpose, we um try to get within five percent of the target population. And that way, no two wards would be more than ten percent out of balance with one another. Um, in addition to the Secretary of State's criteria, we are using some additional considerations. And these were developed following um interviews that I conducted with each council member. Um, just to get their ideas and priorities and what's important to them and their citizens. Um, and so these include um trying to follow neighborhood association boundaries wherever possible. Um, minimizing the smaller sections of um neighborhood associations in each ward. So that it's easier for citizens to know who their representative is, using natural boundaries wherever possible. And there were some additional suggestions that pertain to specific local areas. So the first step in the analysis was to um analyze the current ward boundaries to see where um they need to be rebalanced. And so this is what the current wards, um, what you're looking at here. You see the percentages um in either black if they're positive or red if they are negative. And that is the deviation from the target population. So the target population is calculated by dividing the total city population. Um, just a hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five people by eight wards. And that would give us a target of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-two. If the world was a perfect place and we could get everything even. Um, since we can't, we're again shooting for that five percent uh margin. And so you can see here, um, you know, note to no one's surprise, probably Ward Eight is the most out of balance since it's grown fastest. It's over by over twelve percent over that target. Ward Four is just over eleven percent over the target. Um, and then wards two and six are pretty significantly under the target. Um, Ward One is just slightly under, so it's pretty close. Uh, words uh five and three and seven are pretty okay. Um, but unfortunately, in the process of trying to balance adjacent wards, sometimes that's going to have a domino effect. And so even if it's okay in the population, we might have to make some small changes in order to accommodate the adjacent wards. So the development of the alternatives, um, we have three alternatives that were developed. And these were all developed with slightly different approaches. Alternative one is what we're calling the minimal change option. Excuse me. So this one was developed with making as minimal change as possible to the existing boundaries. But to get the population within the balance of the five percent. Alternative two is a minimal change and then um making some slight adjustments to better align with neighborhood association boundaries. And then alternative three is um the following the neighborhood association boundaries as much as possible. But trying to accommodate future growth in the outer wards. So this is alternative one and this is that minimal change option. Um, if you look at the map, the shading indicates the current, the alternative uh boundaries. And then the black line is the current ward boundary so that you can see where those um are taking place, the changes are. So in Ward One, we're having to expand further into Ward uh West Salem to lower that population of Ward Eight. Um, over on the east side, we are taking a small section of Ward Five and putting it into Ward Six. To bring um that population into line with the, the five percent. We're taking um a section from Ward One and giving it to Ward Two to balance um the population of Ward One. Since it's had to take on more population in West Salem. There's a small section of, excuse me, Ward Seven that's uh been transferred to Three. And then Ward Four, um, we're taking a part of that and putting it into Ward Seven. And all of these numbers are working out between the five per, within the five percent. And this is the um alternative one with the neighborhood association boundaries. And um they, they align where they can. Um, we can't always align with them just because we have other considerations that we have to consider first. So alternative two. Um, we did a couple of different things here. So we've uh brought more aboard one into West Salem and taking um a little bit extra area in here. Um, we still have the same change as the previous alternative, taking a small part of one, of five and putting it into six. And we're also putting part of two into six to make that boundary a little bit more compact. Um, we have an area here that we're getting from two to three. And then another significant change in this one is that this section that was previously in seven is in one. So that would include Mitchell Brown Island Park. This is um everything that's north of River Road. And then this is the alternative two with the neighborhood association boundaries. Oh, let me back up a little bit. Another pretty significant change is this area. Um, we've taken the area of um the Candelaria and Fair, Fairmont Hill area and put it from seven into two. And I kind of wanted to explain this one and let me back up to this other map. Um, sometimes the block boundaries don't make a lot of sense, but we have to work with them. We can't split them and they can be sometimes large and very oddly shaped and that is the case here. So if you can see, this is all one block and it encompasses the cemetery. And um you have to either take it in or out. And so because it's such a odd boundary, it didn't make sense to transfer it into Ward Two with the rest of this area. So that's why that chopped up area looks a little bit strange. And that's just part of us, um, you know, being at the mercy of those census block geographies. Okay, and then moving on to alternative three. So for this alternative, the goal here was to try to balance the population so that the outer wards would be able to accommodate some future growth. And so um we've also, you know, tried to do as minimal changes we can as possible. We did something a little bit different in West Salem with bringing additional um Ward One into West Salem. So we're taking this area instead of going along Edgewater as in the, the previous ones. Um, this change is the same as the previous alternative, um, as well as this one. Um, the only other thing here is that we're taking this area, and actually this is an alternative two as well. The area that's north of Highway twenty-two and east of I five is being transferred from Ward Three into Ward Two. So, and then here is that map with the neighborhood association boundaries. Um, so in addition to um everything else, we did do some analysis of the race and ethnic um data that we get from the Census Bureau. Um, this is required by the Secretary of State. It, as one of the criteria states that no district shall be drawn for the purpose of diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. And so we don't want to do that intentionally or unintentionally. So we wanted to look at that data with each alternative. Citywide, the non-white and Hispanic um people, I'm sorry, comprise thirty-six point five percent of the population. And so that's kind of what we're looking at when we're looking at each of these alternatives. So this is the current wards and the distribution of non-white and Hispanic people. So the shading, um, the darker the color, the more um people there are. And so in West Salem is the highest concentration of non-white and Hispanic people. And that's been the case every time we've done this. Um, if you can see this table, um, wards two, five and six have um over the city average of the number of non-white and Hispanic people. Um, and that is a trend that has continued from the past. So then in looking at alternative one, we're not seeing a lot of change here because this was the minimal change option. There's not really a lot to say here except that there's not very much change. And the next slide will kind of illustrate that. So this is the results of that analysis. So we have the current word uh figures here, the alternative uh one word figures here. And we're seeing very, very minimal change in those percentages, um, just fractions of a percent really. So conclusion is that there's very little impact for this alternative. For alternative two, um, same thing. This is a minimal change plus a bit of alignment for the neighborhood associations. So there's a little bit more change here. Um, because of this change that we're making by moving this area from three to two, we do see an impact there. And that is um that in Ward Three, the percentage of non-white and Hispanic people drops by nearly four percent. So we're moving from thirty-two percent to twenty-eight point three percent of the population is non-white or Hispanic. Um, interestingly, Ward Two did not really change very much and I, that's because it's um exchanging some area with Ward Six, which is also very diverse. So that's the reason for that. Um, alternative three um is the same issue. It, it all has to do with this area north of uh Highway twenty-two and the exchange with uh Ward Two. So there is that same impact that we're seeing that we saw in the previous one where um now there's a four percent difference. So it's going from thirty-two percent to twenty-eight percent. So Ward Three would be coming slightly less diverse. Um, in the end, Ward or uh alternative one, there's really no impacts to be talked about. Words, uh, alternatives two and three, Ward Three will become slightly less diverse. Uh, but in the end, wards two, five and six will remain uh above the city average for non-white and Hispanic population. And um the city really wants to get feedback on this and any other issues uh around redistricting. And so they're encouraging the public to provide comments in a few different ways. Um, an email can be sent to planningcomments@cityofsalem.net. Um, we have an interactive map, which I'm going to demonstrate in a few minutes. And in that map is a comment feature. Um, so that is another way that comments can be provided. There are going to be two public open houses, one of which is tomorrow at four o'clock. The other one is Wednesday at noon. And a public hearing is supposed to be scheduled for November twenty-second, I believe. And so the public can comment any of those ways. Um, so now I would like to demonstrate the mapping application. Which is a way that people can explore these options. And you just go to the city's website and click on the link. And this is the map application. So you have navigation tools here, you can zoom and pan and that sort of thing. Um, there are uh instructions for the site here, how to use this map. You can use the layer list to turn layers on and off. You can turn the neighborhood association boundaries on there. Or the uh house districts. And then you can toggle the alternatives on and off to explore those. You can click on the map to get a pop-up. Um, there's a lot of layers here, so you just have to arrow through them, but. It'll tell you there's um current Ward Five, the population. And then in the top, we have links that go to the comment maps for each of the alternatives. Um, so you just click on the map. And you go to the comment map. There's some little instructions here and then you can either click directly on the map. In a ward, or you can click on the sidebar. And if you want to leave a comment, you can just open the comment form here and fill out your information and submit. And then that uh your comment will be recorded in a spreadsheet that will get sent to the city and um they're collecting those. So there's uh one of these alternatives or uh one of these maps for each of the alternatives. And you can comment individually on each one. Um, if you want to get really advanced, you have some other tools. There's a draw tool where you can uh draw if you wanted to send a map to the city with your suggestions. And then there's a select tool, um, which will allow you to set, select um blocks. And then you can open a table to see the data and show the selected records. You can click on population and statistics and it'll give you the statistics, including a sum of those values. So that is the mapping application. Other than that. Um, that's the end of my presentation, but I can take questions if anyone has any.
That was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions uh at this point? Okay. That was very good. Uh, Counselor Nordeig.
Uh, first of all, thank you. That is, uh, I know you sat down with me over Zoom and I know you did that with everyone and you're under this time crunch. So first of all, thank you. I know this is no easy feat, so I appreciate all the work that you and Lisa are doing. And I, I know that this process doesn't come up very often. I'm genuinely curious to see what public comment would look like. Um, a lot of folks like their city councilor, they like knowing who that person is. And there, as many of my peers know, many of, they don't know who we are anyway. So um it's, it all kind of depends, but I always look forward to opportunities to, for input. And I will look forward to talking about this with my neighborhood associations to see what their preference is. Um, but uh anyway, we'll see how mighty Ward Seven uh comes out in this.
Sounds like it'll be about the size of Ward Two or Three or One. I mean, that's, that does seem to be the ultimate outcome is, is that population balancing act. Anybody else? Okay, well, we will talk about this again, I'm sure, and, and here, hopefully hear from the public. Uh, it is a great opportunity uh to engage your neighborhood associations in this. I, I was uh counselor for Ward One when they came to me 10 years ago and said, well, how'd you like to have part of West Salem? Which I thought sounded great, actually. It was uh, it has been a, I know uh Virginia's had the same experience. It's a, it's really great to be on both sides of the river. It gives you that certain kind of diversity that's quite interesting and, and how related, how, how much they look alike, feel alike. and how related, how, how much they look alike, feel alike as neighborhoods. So uh, hope you all have an interesting time working this out. Very good then. Um, we have a motion on the floor. Am I calling that one right? And that's Councilor Hoy moved the staff recommendation, which means we would be having a public hearing on this when, Lisa? Next meeting?
Yes, November twenty-second.
November twenty-second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, if the recorder please call a roll.
Councilor Leung.
Hi.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councilor Hoy.
Hi.
Councilor Nordike.
Hi.
Councilor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilor Stapleton.
Hi.
Councilor Anderson.
Hi.
Councilor Phillips.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. We'll look forward to that public hearing. We'll go now to information reports. Trevor?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I raised my hand. Um, my uh, motion or request is regarding six E. Um, I move to call up uh, this item in six E for public hea- hearing.
Second.
Second by Hoy. You want to talk about it or just?
Yeah, I mean, just briefly, I, I do have some, some issues, uh, substantial or substantive issues within it uh, regarding some of the facts. And I just think it's something that uh, should be, you know, brought to the, the public um, as a, a public hearing, so that the community can be heard.
Okay. Anyone else? If the recorder please call the roll.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councilor Hoy.
Hi.
Councilor Nordike.
Hi.
Councilor Lewis.
No.
Councilor Stapleton.
Hi.
Councilor Anderson.
Hi.
Councilor Phillips.
Hi.
Councilor Leung.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. Okay. Anybody else? Uh, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I talked about this a little bit earlier when the planning commission folks were here, and that's item six B. And um, you know, I just hope that the staff will bring something uh, forward to us so we can rec- can consider that in the future. And I don't know, I don't think I have to make a motion on that. Just uh, a request that um, the uh, the city manager may try to move forward on this. If I need a motion, I'll make one, but I don't know that I, that I need to make one.
This is six D, did you say, Tom?
No, sorry. It was uh, six B as in boy.
Ah, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah.
That's the uh, the state land use goal number five and uh, re-upping our inventory of waterways.
How will that come to us? Uh, Mr. Powers, will that come as part of the budget process or part of our goal setting? How will you bring that?
I thi- I think both, uh, mayor and, and council. If you recall, uh, the hour Salem process has resulted in, in several uh, needed plan updates and certainly council direction regarding prioritizing those plan updates, prioritizing other uh, initiatives of, of council would, would be helpful. And I would suggest that that would be most appropriately done uh, during your work session as you're talking about your twenty-twenty-two priorities. And then you would see it again a- as part of your budget deliberations for uh, next fiscal year, next fiscal year's budget.
Great. Sound, sound good, Tom? Great. Councilor Stapleton?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I actually had two things, and I was actually wondering if staff could explain to folks a little bit more about Goal Five. I know um, I had never heard of it until um, staff mentioned it with the R Salem. Uh, but maybe just a, a little couple of, you know, uh, words about what it is. And then I would love to hear an update from Gretchen um, about um, our sheltering options, our warming center.
Which item are you talking about? Uh, which one?
Oh, sorry. Um, for Goal Five, that would be six B, the one that um, Tom was just talking about.
Okay.
Um, and then uh, with Gretchen, I'd love to hear an update on six H.
Six H, okay.
Yeah, and I, I guess I want to hear, um, I know Councilor Gonzalez also brought up some concerns about what's happening over at the CROCK Center. I'm sure she can address that. Um, but I'd love to know how many shelter beds we have going on right now. I know it's thirty-seven last night. We're getting closer and closer to those warming centers open, opening. So I'd like to hear how that's going. Um, and then also, um, if there's any hurdles or what kind of hurdles folks are facing to get into those warming shelters.
Hey, thank you. Um, why don't we uh, who else? Lisa, can you give us the short version of Goal Five?
Uh, yes, I, I can, although I love to talk about planning. I could talk about it forever, but there are nineteen- Sure. It's one of the nineteen statewide planning goals. Um, all cities and counties have to comply with the goals um, through the adoption of your conference of plan and then your zoning code. Goal Five covers natural, scenic, historic resources and open space. And the city complies with various components of it. You know, we're, we're amazing in historic preservation and archaeology. We have adopted plans for natural um, resources such as wetlands and trees and riparian corridors. But over time, the state has updated and, and modernized those rules, and the city hasn't necessarily kept up with that um, uh, rulemaking. And so uh, specifically for our riparian corridors, as the planning commission identified, um, we have some work to do as far as further identifying what those corridors are and potentially increasing our protections around those corridors. Um, that came to light recently during a subdivision, and that's what the planning commission's requesting.
Great. And where could uh, Councilor Stapleton get real detailed information on Goal Five? Where would she go?
Um, well, we have information on our website that we can provide. Uh, the state has information. Happy to meet with you, Councilor Stapleton. And also Patricia Farrell in Public Works um, is, would be the lead on this project, and so she's very familiar as well with what we're talking about.
Great. Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Now Gretchen. Let's get Gretchen up. Hey Gretchen.
Hi, very good. I was just, um, I can take the notes on warming first, if you like, and then circle back to Councilor Gonzalez's questions. Thank you. And this is Gretchen Bennett, and I serve as a liaison on homelessness issues as part of the city manager's office. On warming, thank you. It is starting to get cold. Um, the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency um, is leading our Salem Warming Network, and they are at work um, preparing to activate temperature-activated sites. They also continue to want location leads and suggestions. So if people own indoor spaces and are open to that partnership, I hope you'll let myself or the Arches Project be aware of that so we can explore continued expansion locations. Um, in addition, I know the Church at the Park is opening the second of two duration-warming spaces. Um, both at the um, properties that we're currently funding with the outdoor micro-shelters. We've activated the indoor components of those spaces to be for the duration through March thirty-first to assist with warming efforts. The community has also um, enjoyed the additional physical space and the welcoming indoors on the first floor at the Union Gospel Mission, which adds to the capacity in the um, hotel um, through Project Turnkey um, is likely to have capacity um, after its first priority to serve victims of the wildfires, um, which is also coming online soon. But we absolutely need um, can, everyone's continued thought and referrals related to locations so that we can build out this network. Uh, I think one of the hurdles that people experience is some people have a particular uh, background in trauma that creates real significant barriers to coming indoors to a congregate gathered sort of setting. So we have people who remain um, with real barriers to coming inside to these kinds of spaces and locations. There's also a very real um, nu- volume of items of things that's difficult to get, and people feel concerned about losing the space or the campsite that they have created. So those are common barriers that we hear as we talk with people about contemplating coming inside.
Are you uh, are you in touch with the state fair again about use of the uh, pavilion? Is that on the table at all this year?
Well, it's not because the state fair, um, our state fair and exposition center is a year-round operation.
Right.
Working hard to recruit and attract events uh, on a year-round basis. So our understanding is that was a unique opportunity during COVID when we were able to access it.
Okay.
Before I jump to the others, I see Councilor Hoy has his hand up.
Yeah, Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Gretchen for the information. And I know that you have worked tirelessly on a number of suggested properties. You've researched your own. We've re- we've suggested properties. People in the public have, have suggested locations. And for a variety of reasons, um, we haven't been successful in expanding our, our capacity yet um, to where it needs to be. And I know the intern working with me from Willamette this year has uh, had similar um, experiences in trying to increase our number of safe park sites. He's reached out to, I think, over fifty businesses and churches and nonprofits. And we have one potential that might be viable so far. We're just not getting people uh, who are interested so far. But I'm hoping that, you know, I know that we kind of gave you some parameters when you first started those searches. And I'm wondering if we don't need to revisit those parameters and look at some, you know, maybe purchases or um, just reconsideration of what we, the kind of the direction we gave you initially as you come up empty.
Are, are you hitting limits as a result of our actions? I mean, do we need to get this on the agenda before the snow flies? What Councilor Hoy's talking about? Gretchen, what do you?
Thank, thank you. I really appreciate the question, and um, I can absolutely come back to you with it, with a, a more complete answer to the question. We do, as a result of some good community suggestions, we have a couple of possibilities that we're researching right now. And I'd like to see whether those will meet our, will meet our objectives or not, but quite quickly can come back to you with a report on whether they have or haven't, and what might be um, some possible next steps for you to consider that, that, that get to what you're saying there. Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I know we're trying to pay attention to a number of factors there.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess I would encourage you to not wait because of one or two potential, I mean, given our rate of success so far, I just feel like it's time to rethink those crit- the criteria that we've looked at. And I would encourage you to come back s- um, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to be getting into our holiday break period, which is all, you know, a big lag time, and I would just, I would hope that we could deal with this before that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I really second uh, Councilor Hoy's uh, statement on that. I think it, it's uh, uh, time is really of the essence right now, and I know there are properties we're looking at, ideas we're looking at that really need to be vetted, will require some council vetting. And we may just have to put some stuff on the table and have a talk uh, as a city council so that we're not letting these things go by us if, if it's possible. And I understand the difficulty, but uh, don't be gun shy. We need to get this stuff talked about.
Copy that. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilor-
Councilor Anderson, there he is.
Um, tha- thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gretchen, in the past couple of days, I've left you two voicemails about two potential properties, and I'm hoping you got those. And I understand why you didn't reply because you are extremely busy. But if you didn't get those, we can talk tomorrow and, and uh, we can discuss them further.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, uh, hi Gretchen. I'm, I'm wondering if you could put some numbers to the warming beds? I mean, if we went down to, excuse me, if we went down to twenty-five degrees tonight, how many beds would be available tonight? And what would be the availability as we move forward into the winter as those beds, I hope, grow?
Thank you. At the first Portland Road location, there's twenty-five. At the second, we're building to sixty. And then for the temperature-activated sites, I don't know, but I'd be happy to get that number to you. Yeah.
Be good. Could, I'm sorry.
I have also the questions from Councilor Gonzalez.
Right, I was gonna just move to that if we could. I think that's really important to hear what's happening out at the CROCK Center right now.
Yeah, thank you. The area near the CROCK Center includes the Claggett Creek Natural Area, as many of you know. And we're um, we're, we're observing and, and, and concerned about a number of um, growing areas of um, camping and garbage repos. There's a huge pile of garbage over in one area, so garbage and increased camping that's not authorized or permitted by the city. Um, staff was there today, and as soon as we can get the resources scheduled, we'll get out and get as much of the garbage out of the area as we can. Um, we're also, we're seeing shifts in this, in this as we conclude camping or as camping is not available in some locations. Um, we're seeing people shifting to other locations, which is also creating an issue for people losing track of the service providers or the resources that they're connecting with to get into housing areas. Um, we do have some space currently available in some shelters, but it's not meeting all of the demand, particularly in the area of women. Um, and so there's a need while we're addressing these locations to also be continuing to look for shelter sites, to speak to our conversation earlier. But we're sure aware of it and, and been real concerned to hear the reports we're getting from the community and are, and are working to address it as soon as we can.
It, it seemed to me you had cleaned that out or it had been cleaned out within recent, within the past several months. Was it this past summer that there had been a, a concerted effort out in that uh, that wetland?
Well, to a, to a degree, we've certainly addressed particular segments, but we're, we're watching growth in that area. And I can't say a huge wholesale conclusion has, or has occurred there. We had a recent area at a private piece of property, which we completely concluded camping in that area to help enforce the trespass of the private property owner.
That's the Kale Road property.
Yeah, and that's, that's a little bit different one, but you, you know, as you conclude in one area, we see shifting into another areas. What we're experiencing is that shifting.
I, my understanding is that Hazel Patton's fundraising effort uh, for the small houses has, has really been quite successful. Then she's achieved about a hundred of them.
Yes.
And do we have a place for those right now? Uh, we just went through, I, I mean, we just went through the discussion over in West Salem for women over fifty-five. Have we got a place to put those up for that, that subgroup yet?
Not yet. To your point, Frenchy-
Are people scared of them? What's going on? These are elderly ladies who need housing and are living homeless on the street. I am just baffled. You're the expert on homelessness. What's going on?
We need to cite locations and to the, to President, Council President Hoy's point, we may need to rethink our criteria and our assumptions and, and bring some ideas. We had been working hard to try to locate parcels that are not currently used for another purpose. We're also concerned about financial feasibility in the longer term and, and trying hard to acquire property that's maybe already publicly owned or that we can access at low cost to try to stretch our resource into the future. But to your point, that may need to be calibrated, given the urgency of the number of people that are outdoors that would need and, and experience a real life-changing shift with a program like this. So that's the, that's the rub for sure.
Well, you know, the other one thing that I hear and I, I, Hoy hears the most, I think, on this stuff, so I'm, I'm always interested in his thoughts on it. But what does, what does the sustainability of this set of projects we're involved in look like? Do we have, how many years can we do this uh, at the current rate? We're at a very high point now. We just talked about ten million, eleven million or so coming in from the state. Uh, you know, there's going to be some federal money coming, I think. Uh, we've got county, the counties are interested and they're more involved than they've been in a long time. What, how long can we do this?
It's a great question, and I'd be wrong if I speculated precisely. We're working with the Budget Office right now to try to map that out before you. But to just give you a bit of an example, the, the property that we're, our current one, which has safe park, micro-shelters, and now we're activating duration-warming, looks like the budget will be about one point seven million just this year. So if you wanted to sustain that for several years, think about the cost that associates that. And that doesn't contemplate running indoor year-round, only a limited number of months. So it's, it's absolutely expensive because you're providing case management services. We're also paying attention to the need to um, activate and have the navigation- activate and have the navigation center.
Right. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Gretchen. And I guess, you know, the number is staggering. It's no doubt about it. It's a huge number. But it is the path to ending this problem locally, and that's that's what we have to be on. It's those wraparound services, the managed programs, the wraparound services that provide us a path to people getting off the street. We know that our programs, like our permanent supportive housing, that's a that's a that's a way to end homelessness for those people who get into those programs. The the micro-shelters are a great first or second stop out of a tent until you get onto your next better place. And so and they all come with services as well. They come with a with a case manager and and services that help them navigate to their next better place. And so it isn't, it is a high upfront cost, but I think it's an investment in helping people to finally end this this cycle of homelessness they've been in. You have to remember that in the Marion-Pulk region, our, the number of chronically homeless people is more than twice the national rate. So it's fifty, I think fifty-seven percent of our homeless people are chronically homeless, and nationwide it's less than half that. And so our problem is more difficult here than it is in other places. And but it takes these, it takes a variety of services. And I've been thinking about this, I was about our, you know, our kind of continuum of programs. And we have prevention, we have manage, and we have ending. And it's important, I think, to try to put each one of these different things in one of those buckets. And the site out on Market Street with the cottage clusters for the seniors, that's a great homelessness prevention program because that's getting people that are at risk to be homeless. And then we have the, you know, the camp, managed camping, you might even put micro-shelters and and some other things into that, and the navigation center into managing homelessness. And then it's permanent supportive housing and programs like that with all those wraparound services that really help end homelessness. So I, you know, the research says you want to really put your money in ending homelessness, of course, because that's the, you know, that has an end date. But we have to balance across that continuum. I don't think it's necessarily the city's role to get so much into prevention because that's, I think that's maybe other people's role, or at least I haven't figured out a way for the city to play a role there. But really, the managing and ending is where we where we need to focus. And we have to balance, balance that out. We need to decide if it's a policy matter. Do we want to spend more on managing or more on ending, or where's the mix? And that's the conversations that we have. You know, I think we've, the public certainly wants us to manage homelessness more because it's the thing that's kind of in everybody's face. But in terms of the humanitarian crisis and what's right for the long term, and this is really a long-term issue, we really need to focus on ending homelessness.
Counselor, I really hope, and I really am almost asking for more of your time, I guess, is that you'll bring that, what you just talked about, that kind of vision to the to the policy and agenda discussion. I think as we can talk with management about kind of here's how we see this, or you're particularly involved in this, I think that would be a really great way to help us rationalize the spending and understand what's going on and be able to explain how this fits into a broader picture of dealing with this problem beyond the, as you said, people just make it go away, you know, the really simple, I don't know how you do it. It's my notes are always, I don't know how you do it, but that's your job. Make it go away. So I think having a a really good understanding of the kind of continuum, the kind of packages you're talking about, the kind of populations being served and and assisted is very, very helpful.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I actually just yesterday kind of had this visual of the three, kind of the three funnels and the three areas. And yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I thought that was really, I don't know, Gretchen, you're the you're the pro from Dover on this. I thought that was quite interesting. Did you hear it the same way?
Agreed.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, real quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Gretchen, I know this is a broken record, but since we're talking about opening up our blinders a little bit, I really would love to find a way to have the state of Oregon recognize that at no cost to them at all, no money, they could help us out. And I'll use the example of the site that we cannot use now in West Salem because it's in a transportation system in the state of Oregon. It's not used for transportation. It's virtually empty. If we could just borrow it for a little bit. But what that's going to take is for the state of Oregon to be one of our partners. I appreciate the money that they've sent, but I'm asking them to loosen their blinders and to help us find some sites that are desperately needed, not continue to be a roadblock like they were in West Salem.
Yeah. Or be that offer us things like the Market Street Overpass for months on end as a festering problem. I really hear what you're saying.
I, speaking of Wallace, and to get to Counselor Gonzalez's point as well, I did appreciate the staff's diligent research to try to discover a way into the transportation right-of-way properties. What we learned is that it would take essentially a change to Oregon revised statute to be able to have a permit of entry to be on those types of properties. Otherwise, we'd have to literally purchase them, and they're quite expensive, and they take a long eighteen to twenty-four months to even be able to become available to be sold. To Counselor Gonzalez's point about lessons learned, I think there's two quick points to make here. Overall, honestly, I don't know that we're going to be able to ever prevent the experience of proposing a site for discussion and then concluding it's unworkable. You know, we did an initial level of community outreach and then and we checked all of the maps. And then neighbors helped us understand their day-to-day experience, which led us to further research, which led us to conclude it wasn't workable. And that that local input as part of the community process helped us learn. And I'm not sure we'll ever completely prevent that experience because I think it's iterative as we as we we do that initial stage of research, but then learn on the down road. However, we, one step we are taking, as you know, we cite these currently through emergency order. And before city council in late November, November twenty-second, you'll see a first reading of revisions to Salem Revised Code, which lays into detail the citing criteria and the process for these. And you'll have the opportunity to think about how you want that to be and, you know, the notifications and the criteria and to be able to shape that. There'll be a first reading and then a public hearing. And so we'll have good opportunity to consider how how we want this to work in the future.
Great. Very good. Any any further discussion on this issue that anyone wants to bring up? Yes, Counselor Norgdike?
Sure. I just wanted to add, first of all, I agree with a lot of what's already been said. And I'm disappointed to hear that there's not a single location in the gigantic Oregon State Fairgrounds property that would be suitable for a temporary homeless shelter. Really? The entire thing's booked? Come on now. So I, yeah, no words. But in addition to that, the the grant money that we just agreed to accept, I was reading the fine print, and I despise contracts, and yet I read them. And it says in the fine print that among the many potential uses for the ten point five million dollars in sheltering grant money, I wondered, what does sheltering mean? That seems like a pretty broad term. And that ten point five million can be used for a number of things, including the operating costs for crisis response. So I know that we will be discussing priorities in our near future and funding sources for things such as a mobile crisis unit. In addition to all these sheltering options along the spectrum have been in discussion. And I just want to remind folks that the money that we just agreed to accept includes ten point five million dollars, which can be used for a number of things. And I encourage you to read the contract. But one of them is crisis response, which I think is really helpful for helping to transport people who are outdoors in terrifying conditions, whether by inclement weather or unsafe conditions for elderly women, homeless, and other individuals. Transporting them to these various shelter options that are taking shape is one of the ways that we can help connect people to the services and the shelter that we've discussed. So just wanted to remind folks of that as we consider what to do with that funding in the future.
Great. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Gonzalez?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. And just wanted to thank Gretchen for doing all that hard work. It's real, you know? She's fearless in talking to neighbors, which has been a big challenge here in northeast Salem. But one more question, what about our neighbors to the north, Kaiser? Are they helping in any, where are they at in this discussion? Because we're joined at the hip.
Counselor Hoy?
I mean, when I say, when I say help from Kaiser, I'm saying, are they proposing sites? Do they have sites they're offering? You know, that's what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can I can say, Counselor Gonzalez, that Mayor Clark, the mayor of Kaiser, is the chair of the Mid-Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. I'm the vice chair. So she is an active member of that group and participates diligently and has been for quite a number of years. So I can I can tell you that they are at the table having the conversation.
Anything else?
No.
Up there, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, very good. Gretchen, thank you very much. Really look forward to you coming back to us with proposed change. We really need, you know this, I mean, we've got, it'd be really sad to have a hundred, hundred and fifty of these little houses and no place to go. I really, I think the council has proven it's more than willing to step up on locations. So keep that in mind and know that there's a lot of council support for moving out on this kind of stuff. So. Very good. Anything else anyone wants to bring up? Did we, this is the information. Okay. Well, then, I, we don't have any first or second readings, so unless there's anything further, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.